See it, hurry up.
Good morning, Rankin County. Uh, thank you for coming out to our November fifteenth board meeting. I'm gonna call this board meeting to order and I'm gonna ask Craig Slate if he would pray for us.
Well, God, we thank you for the day you've given us today. As always, it is a blessing from you and we thank you for it. Father, we don't take for granted that you give us a place of service that we can come together, share together, gather together, Father, and conduct the business of the county together. Do that in a way, Lord, that pleases you, uh, that, that makes good sense for all of the citizens of our community. Father, how they rely and trust, uh, this group of men who have dedicated themselves to serve the greater good of our community. I pray, Father, you'll give them the wisdom they need today to make good decisions. Father, we never forget how blessed we are with safety and security right here in Rankin County. And I thank you, Lord, that you provide that blessing to us. I pray that you will help those men and women who are conducting, uh, even, uh, dangerous actions right as we speak, Father. I pray that you will protect them and bring them home safely to their families in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Um, excuse me, Craig. If you need a minute, we can pause before we go to.
No, sir. We're ready to roll.
Ready?
Yes, we're ready to roll. Thank you.
All right.
You're calling me out, though.
I didn't mean, uh, all right, we'll move on to public comments. Uh, Jesse and school people, whatever order y'all want to come up.
I respect that three-minute rule, Gaines, I promise you.
Whatever order y'all want.
I do have, uh, I've got a couple of folks with me, so I'm gonna start off, if that's okay, and then if we have any questions. But thank y'all for having us and, and, uh, for considering this. But, um, of course, uh, we're asking for y'all to consider to adopt a, uh, an ordinance, uh, that would help curb any false information, uh, that, that someone may fill out a form or residency form. Uh, and not just for schools, though. I think it would be something that the county could put in place. Uh, that would be any, any county, um, type entity could use this. And, and we sent some emails, uh, with some, some, uh, some samples from other counties. But basically, um, to kind of help curb, people that don't live in Rankin County. And, and if they were to, uh, if they falsify records right now, uh, you know, we ask them to leave if we find out, or if they're turned in, and we do our investigation and, uh, but, but an ordinance would help put a little teeth into that. Maybe, uh, maybe some kind of fine or, or something like that that would help curb that. So, uh, you know, right now, there is no universal choice at this point. We don't know what the net next legislative session, uh, may have. But, um, you know, students that live in Rankin County should go to Rankin County Schools, and students that don't live in Rankin County, um, you know, they should go to school where they, where they live. So, uh, we do consider some transfers at this time in Rankin County. If it's a teacher, uh, that may live out of the county, but all those are board-approved. Um, but, but, you know, we, we have a number. I mean, it may not be a whole lot right now. They're a number from year to year. You know, when you have eighteen thousand kids, you're gonna find some that, that, uh, that do falsify things and, and try to get into our great schools and our great counties. So, anyway, that's what we're asking and, and, uh, I've got some folks here. If y'all had any questions, we'll be glad to answer those for you.
I'll pass it now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
All right, so the, uh, from this, what we, I think we emailed all this to you a while back. The first one is, uh, an ordinance out of DeSoto County, and the second is City of Ridgeland, and the third packet is some paperwork that we require. So, uh, I have one full-time guy that is investigator, and that's what his job is, to investigate residency. So what we're seeing is, uh, we're seeing false lease paperwork, printing the lease agreement offline, filling it out. Um, but the problem, there's no consequences. So, we're just asking for, uh, something where we could go to Justice Court, possibly file charges. We're not asking to fill the jail up, just something, something we can lean on if we need to. Uh, more than likely, we'd go to Justice Court if we prove that they, um, filed false paperwork. And they would go through the Justice Court process, just like everybody else. DeSoto County has a, uh, a fine and could possibly have some jail time. So, uh, we're seeing, uh, you know, folks that are living in other counties using different addresses. We're, we're proving it, kicking some of them out, but some of them, they come right back and do it again. So, that's what we're asking for, y'all. Entertain that and, uh, you know, we want them to come school here, but we want them to come buy a house here, too. And I think if they're not contributing anything to the county, they're not contributing anything to, to y'all either, so.
Um, I don't know if this is a Craig question or Jesse, who is gonna enforce it?
It depends on which ordinance.
Which, which area they file.
So, DeSoto County has a false information ordinance where, uh, my understanding, it is, uh, countywide. It, it pertains to any county, uh, entity. That could be the tax collector, that could be the building permit department. So, the way theirs is set up, if they falsify any documents, any county official, law enforcement, uh, could file the charges.
Do you have to have that verbiage on all the forms that they sign that would be a false statement? Or can you do one ordinance that covers?
Yes, sir. Your ordinance would cover whether there's a statement or notice on a form or not. Your, your ordinance would cover anything that was falsified. You don't have to say, hey, if you, if you falsify this document, you could be subject to prosecution. Uh, that, that's not required. They're on, they're, they're subject to being noticed that this board has adopted an ordinance to that effect. Um, so I, I, I think in looking at what the school district uses, the form that it uses, it would be, uh, it would be appropriate. And I think there's no reason not to tell folks, hey, if you falsify this, you could be subjected, not only to the state statute that provides for some level of fine and prosecution at state level, you'd also be subject to local ordinance as well. I think that'd be appropriate to let them know that. Seems to me that they may, there may be some level of hesitation before they fill out falsely. If they're told, you might go to jail. Uh, so, I, I'm not gonna suggest that that will cover everybody. But the, uh, so, it, Mr. President, this may be an opportunity for me, uh, to address what we've already talked, we've talked about this. Just as a quick reminder about where we kind of felt like we might land. Number one, uh, the DeSoto County ordinance appears to be in keeping with what the school district's looking for, and it would be in keeping with what this board would be comfortable to adopt. But there was some language that gave us a little bit of heartburn, and that had to do with tasking the sheriff or a sheriff's deputy to actually enforce it. And so what we talked about was removing that enforcement mechanism out of the DeSoto County ordinance and fashioning it so that any, any person associated with the school district is able then to enforce it. So however, however the school district chooses to enforce a false statement that is submitted to the school district, the school district through its personnel can take that forward, fill out the affidavit at Justice Court, and take care of that enforcement, ha- have available to it additional enforcement authority, right? Uh, with the, the ordinance that DeSoto adopted, and I, I think Jesse's right, it, it's much broader than just a school district. It defines political subdivision as basically any arm of the county. So, in, any county office would be able to take the DeSoto County model, and if they received, and for, say, community development, I just, I'll just make something up here as I go on the fly. Let's say community development, uh, gets an application for a pole barn. I don't know why I brought that up, Brian, but let's say that, that that happens.
Let's use some other, let's use some others.
That's a really good one, uh, Steve. So, so, uh, so they make application for pole barn. What, what ends up on the property is something that's got power, water, uh, maybe it even has sewer access. They put a kitchen in it. Uh, they've got a bed in there. They basically made a pole barn into a dwelling. That would be a false statement made to the community development office, and if this board were to choose to do so, you could use this ordinance, the structure this ordinance has adopted, and pursue charges against those individuals in Justice Court for making a false statement. And often had to be proved, and you'd have to have all your documents together, and it had to be clearly established, uh, but it'd fall on the Justice Court through the prosecutor, county prosecutor, to enforce that on behalf of the board. That's an example of someone other than the school district being able to take the same ordinance and effectively police what would be a false statement. So, again, we, the, the, the thinking is, I appreciated it. I'm not a decision-maker. I'm just here to help. But as I appreciated our discussion from November the fourth, there was concern over, uh, the sheriff and his folks having to be integrally involved in the enforcement mechanism, and that being a burden on the sheriff's office where it's a school district matter, and if we can authorize the school district to enforce it rather than using the sheriff to enforce it, that would be a better outcome. That was the impression I was left with. And so that would be my plan to, to move forward and present you guys with an ordinance.
Well, it gives a school authority to see fit what they need to, to do, you know. We're just, are y'all good with that, Jesse?
Yeah.
Is that the way you would see it? Maybe the principal at that school would do an affidavit, take it and file it, or, or school attorney?
I have two other guys that work for me. They are sworn law enforcement officers.
Okay.
I would, my plan is for them to handle. They handle investigations, so they would be the one to take the evidence and, and file that.
Well, our ordinance would have that in there.
That's correct.
Y'all would be the one, the party that would be.
The ordinance that you're speaking about is, uh, all encompassing the county, correct? So, on the county side of it, not the school district side, say the board of supervisors, uh, who enforces that? Give our tax collector, tax assessor, find someone who might be on it.
This board. A request would come to this board, and this board would say this matter needs to be delivered over to the Justice Court. Whether we have to officially be involved, it probably could be handled sort of offline. You've already adopted the ordinance. And so, uh, it just depends on what the language of the ordinance is. And my, my thought would be that, uh, it might be good for it all to be cleared through the board before we haul off and file affidavits, right? So, yes, and so it would be on behalf of the county. Uh, and so our elected officials, either a tax collector, tax assessor, I'm not suggesting, by the way, that y'all are anxious about any of that. I'm just saying that.
I just saw you sitting there.
For the purposes of this conversation, it, it could be drafted broadly enough to encompass any department in the county that takes and receives information, application. Now, one thing we need to keep in mind is that throughout our statutes, throughout our statutory regime, there are any number of other statutes that kind of hint at some sort of enforcement mechanism. There may already be stuff in place. Having an additional layer with a Justice Court proceeding is, is not designed to supplement or, or to supersede what is already in the law. That, I mean, there are some false statements that get delivered. If somebody was to make a false statement to the sheriff, what, we've got criminal statutes that address what you do with that and the penalties associated with it. So this would not be designed to supersede that. It would be in addition to. We have to be clear in the language. This is not to supplement or to supersede any existing statutes.
They just want some consequences when somebody files false stuff. You know, right now, y'all don't have any. You know, they can do it and do it, keep, you know, repeatedly keep doing it. So just some kind of consequences. So, uh, you know, maybe to get somebody's attention.
Yep.
Right.
We would, we would, of course, attach the ordinance to their paperwork that they receive every year, and I think that would help.
Yeah, if it was on the paperwork they filled out, and everybody reads that, you know, now they know there's some consequences that can, you know.
What do we need to do, Jesse?
Tell me you're ready to move forward and, and give me some clear indication that we want to track the DeSoto model precisely, or we want to tweak the DeSoto model as discussed.
I'm good with moving forward. I just think, you know, maybe y'all need to discuss, you know, so everybody's on the same page.
Well, the tweaking would be, they, they would handle their own investigation and the sheriff's department would be part of it.
That's correct. We'll have, we'll have specific language.
How would, how would this affect Pearl, be in their center?
They handle their own, don't they?
This?
Yeah.
It's a county ordinance, presumptively.
They could attach this ordinance to their.
Request, just like anybody in the county, uh, they, they could pursue it through Justice Court.
Unless that student, I would say, lived in this.
My, you know, my hope would be that what can happen here is if Pearl is interested in this, Steve, they'll go to the City of Pearl, Board of Aldermen and Mayor, and request a similar ordinance that's affected at the city level, and then handle everything through city court.
And that, that's something, too. I mean, a lot of these schools, you got Brandon, is the, the alderman and the mayor's gonna have to do the same thing.
Yeah. You, you guys realize this applies to unincorporated county, right? So what we're gonna really be able to cover here is really designed to be Puskin, Bucket, and probably McLaurin. Pilahatchee's gonna have to work through the town. Uh, Brandon'll have to work through its mayor and alderman. Pearl would have to work through its mayor and alderman. Same with Flowood. So there's, this is kind of a bits and pieces approach, but.
They could adopt, you know.
They couldn't adopt the same thing that we're proposing.
Lots of county schools, they're not city schools, everything.
Yeah, that's right.
The only thing is, in Rankin County, Pearl has a municipal.
Right. This, the, the, the board of supervisors doesn't have authority to effect ordinances that, uh, are effective within municipal boundaries. That has to be done at the city level. So even though it's a county school district, the, this board doesn't have an authority to impress some ordinance that the school district can enforce inside a municipal boundary. They need the cities to adopt a similar ordinance if it's a school that's located in that city. So they're not gonna go to Brandon unless they live in city Brandon.
Now, some of them live in the county.
So there's some unincorporated county.
That's what I was gonna ask.
But i- if they live in unincorporated county, and it can be established in court that the application has been received from a, a person who is purportedly a resident in unincorporated county, it would apply.
And I still think, um, if y'all consider this in passing, I think we could work with our cities.
I think they would, too.
And have them, uh, you know, y'all, I think they follow y'all's lead on that. So, uh, but, yeah, we, I was also gonna say, we do have some, most.
That's right.
All of them have.
Yeah, the school district extends beyond municipal boundaries. So, yeah, so there's some, there's some weird, there's some oddities to what we're trying to do here.
I assume this has gotten to be a problem with y'all bringing this to us, bigger than probably most people recognize. And.
Well, it, it is, Mr. Gaines. I mean, it, it's been a problem probably a long time, honestly, and, and, you know, we, we have a lot of times focused on affidavits, you know, um, being an issue. And we're finding out as we dig deeper in affidavits, what you see, that we do have the ten thousand dollar, but it's a state level, um, not the local level. But affidavits are, are not necessarily our, our problem, our big problem. So, um, and, and it's just like, like we were talking about, Jesse's, you know, we'll go run somebody out, and then they just turn around and go some, you know, go down the street and do something or, um, and so we're, we're, I think we, if we could ever get the message out there that you, you gotta, you gotta live here and, and you can't lie, and, and, you know, they'll, they'll quit doing it if we hit them a couple times in the pocket. But it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's not a, you know, we're not, it's not a thousand. You know, but I mean, it's, it's, it's an issue that all of our zones face, and, and we, we as a school district think it's real important to, to try to educate the kids here, and, and y'all know, our, our funding comes from our local tax base.
Yes.
It, we get state funding, but Rankin County, we're, we're proud to say that we have a great local tax base, and we do things outside, uh, of that state money, um, and provide for our students and our teachers and our families. So, um.
My thinking is, we start with the schools as a pilot-type deal, and I'm not saying that no one else can use it. On a case-by-case, we review them, and, you know, I can see down the road it would be implemented across the board. But kind of work the kinks out with the schools. Uh, and on a case-by-case, if somebody has one, we'll review it, put the ordinance in, and don't try to overwhelm ourselves with chasing every file down to see if somebody didn't put the right phone number or something, you know.
Yes, sir.
So you're gonna just draw up the ordinance and let them take a look at it and make sure they're.
Absolutely. We'll get it, we'll get it to you guys, uh, and let you look, see what we've drawn up. And my thought would be, uh, if we can all get on the same page about it, we'll, we'll stand it up and have it retroactive on, uh, Fourth of December. Whatever. First Monday.
First.
Is that, is that good for y'all?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It's a lot quicker than I thought. There you go. At least we can get it first.
Well, we've already talked about it. I mean, we've been discussing it.
No, we're good with that. That'd be.
Okay. Thank y'all for coming in. Thank you for putting this together. Is there anything else that y'all need? Okay. Thank you. All right.
I'm making a motion to approve the whole business of November the fourth.
Brad makes a motion.
I second.
See it. Second, set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, consent agendas. Everybody had a chance to review the consent. Do I have a motion to approve? Scott makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second.
See it. Second, set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Ms. Caroline, tax collector.
Good morning. Okay, item eight for me is authority to void a twenty-twenty-three tax sale for PPIN eight-six-nine-seven-nine until we refund any tax sale purchasers. This was processed, um, erroneously through the tax sale.
I'm making a motion for.
Brad makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott, second, set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Number short. Ms. Stacy McLeach, tax assessor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, three items here. Uh, first one, petitions to adjust the twenty-four homestead exemption supplemental rule.
So moved.
Scott makes a motion.
Second.
See it. Second's a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then the petitions for change of assessment on twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four for personal and twenty-four, uh, real property assessments.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
See it makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then I'm asking for authority for us to contract with, um, for professional services with Dallas Printing for the printing and mailing of the Rankin County Homestead renewal cards, as well as the personal property rendition forms for the twenty-five tax year, and then authority for Harris Computers to export data into the files for Dallas Printing.
All right. Have a motion.
Motion.
Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Brad seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Mike Grant, E.O.S. Director.
Good morning. How are y'all doing?
Good.
So sometime back in September, uh, we were notified that the Command Central Aware, which is the product, it's a Motorola product that the sheriff's department uses to locate all of their radios, whether they be portable devices or the ones in their car, uh, so they can track them and their location. That went down due to what we believe be a power surge. Um, back, like I said, back in September, Motorola came in and repaired it enough to put some backup switches in there, uh, to get it back going. But, uh, before you, I have a proposal, uh, to replace those backup switches with the switches that should be in there, um, so that we can be back fully hundred percent compliant and everything worked like it should.
How much is it? Eighty-two thousand?
Yeah, eighty-two thousand. I'll get you the exact number.
We don't have all that protected?
So this is, uh, outside in the little shelter. Um, it does have UPSs on it and everything. It, it shouldn't have gone down, but for whatever reason, it, it blacked out. I, I involved Wilts and his team out there looking at it to see what was going on, and, um.
I think the key was, he said, it's believed to be a power surge. They really don't know what happened to it.
It basically just, it shut down.
So all the money we paid Motorola, none of that's warranty?
This is county's equipment, correct?
It's basically their software on our equipment.
How important is it? We really need to find these radios, you know? I'm kidding.
I mean, Brian, is that, is that the emergency distress button to, say, officer fighting with someone?
Uh, I don't believe so. This, this is purely tracking.
Tracking.
And accountability.
Eighty-two thousand worth of tracking.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, I've got a, a motion by Jay, second by Scott, under other discussion. Um, do, do you have this in your budget?
That was my next thing. This was not planned, obviously, to have this happen, and so I believe that we need to talk about a, an adjustment or an amendment to my budget for this.
Well, we could just pay that in general with the easiest.
All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes reluctantly.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, Mike Harrison. State your name and address, sir.
Uh, request a wind stream permit for Old English Road, District One.
Make a motion.
See it makes a motion.
Second.
Brad seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Ceasefire North Shore subdivision, uh, District Two property.
Scott makes a motion.
Second.
See it. Second's a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Uh, Union Water Association, Four Inch Main, across Woodrow Martin Road.
Uh, before we take any action on that, tell me what they want to do, because I don't want to dig in the road up. It's supposed to be boring, Rush.
Okay.
Just, let's make sure they understand bore the road, not to dig a trench across it.
Yes, sir. I understand.
All right, I make a motion for, second.
Brad makes a motion. Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? Uh, let it be known that Brad does not want to dig in the road up. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Appreciate it.
There's some places near, they will dig the road up.
Mr. Parker, come on down.
Morning. First item we have, Mr. President, is on the stormwater detention restoration and hydrologic restoration at Live Oaks. Uh, it's our project element three-one-oh-two. We recommend an approval of payout number five from Hodges Land Services in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty dollars and twenty cents. Authority issued that check.
I make a motion to approve.
Brad makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion?
Yeah, y'all need to go out there and look at that project. It turned out great. Y'all have a chance one day right out there. It's gonna make a difference in the subdivision.
Yeah, I, I went out there and looked.
Yeah.
The grass is growing on it now, and it come in underbuck.
This is the project that I was being, expressing appreciation for, and I called it Oak Grove instead of calling it what it is, Live Oaks.
Live Oak.
So I, I wish to retract my state, my prior statement, and hoist my praise on Live Oaks. Did I get that right, Mr. Engineer?
Uh, uh, that's up to you, Mr. Slate.
I guess I felt like I needed to hear that. So are you trying to say that Oak Grove isn't a good project?
Hey, stop that. Uh, I, I actually hadn't laid eyeballs upon Oak Grove. So I can't speak on that. That's what I hear.
All right. My understanding, Brad made the motion, Jay seconded motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item B, Mr. President, is, uh, hydraulic, hydrologic restoration at Melamie, also an our project four-point-oh-nine. We recommend an approval of payout number one from To Be Dirt and Contracting LLC. Hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Authority issued that check.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Scott seconds a motion. Any other? Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
How does that one move?
Good. It's coming right along. Mike and I looked at it yesterday.
Item C, Mr. President, is program element one point six six White Road. That's a bridge replacement. Uh, it is complete. Recommend final payment, uh, in the amount of five hundred and three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents under P O number two four two four five three to Hemp Hill Construction, Inc. And authority issue that check.
I make a motion.
Sid makes a motion and I seem to approve.
That's what I was thinking. Are you making a motion to deny it or are you approving?
I made a motion to approve it.
Ah, okay.
Bridge looks nice.
Yeah, I have a second.
Second.
All right, Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Item D, uh, Mr. President, following along is, uh, watershed protection at Pine Brook. That's the ARPA project there, two point oh two. We recommend an approval of payout number three from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services. Two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Authority issue that check.
Motion to approve.
Scott makes a motion to approve. Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Item E is Gunner Road Improvement Project Phase Two. We recommend an approval of payout number seven from Hemp Hill Construction Company. Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Authority issue that check.
I make a motion to approve.
Sid makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Last item, Mr. President, is the, uh, Willowbrook Drainage Improvements Project. Uh, that was the, I call it the lawsuit project. Uh, we recommend an approval of payout number two from C L R Construction Group, Inc., uh, in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Authority issue that check.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Scott makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Jay seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Aha. Motion passes.
You know, this is gonna be a good Christmas, Engineer Services.
Or the contractors. That's where I'd like, really like to be.
Before you, Tim?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
I know at some point there's a clawback on this ARPA money. And Craig, we are approaching that within a few months?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Not March?
That, no, sir. The, uh, the, the issue, the issue of the December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four deadline was to have matters under contract. And my understanding is that we have everything in our program under contract. So that deadline no longer applies to Rankin County.
Is that?
So how are we coming on getting our reimbursements?
Much, much better, yes. Much better. The pipeline finally opened up, Jay, and now that we have a good set pattern of how the requests for reimbursement need to be submitted and what all information has to be included.
Yeah.
Uh, and now that we got that, what we're seeing is that subsequent applications for reimbursement are moving back more quickly because they're staged the way that Horn wants to see them.
Gotcha.
So, uh, we had anticipated that might be the case and it turned out to be the case. Steve, you, you're right to have your mind thinking about a potential deadline. But the first deadline, the twenty-four deadline, was for having it under contract. We have until the end of twenty-six to actually get the funds spent.
And all the projects that we, uh, I guess finally decided we want to do are under contract, including Clark Creek. The bridge.
Uh, that's the Holly Bush one that you referred to. And if you remember, we pulled it out of ARPA because of the, uh, amount of funding for ARPA, so it, it's, it's, it's a
Now, we dropped a couple of them on Holly Bush. We dropped one or two that were much bigger.
Right, right. It, it, the, the, and that was before, so the scope of that was really big and, and there was potential to do a lot of things out there and it just, it, it, it didn't work out that way.
Right.
So it turned, it, it kind of, it basically reduced to a bridge project. Uh, and so, but that project was pulled out of ARPA and would be done, it was understood that it would be still done, but done with county funds because there wasn't enough ARPA funds to cover. So it's, it's not, there has not been a P O issue. That would be done under the commodity bid. There has not been a P O issue.
All right, I'll, I'll get with Keith and Mike later on that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slay, you are up.
First two items, Mr. President, are to set public hearings for November twenty-seventh at nine A M. You can see Gary Mitchell and Don Ed Woods. Those are both nuisance properties. I'd ask for A and B to be set.
I make a motion to set A and B for November twenty-seventh.
All right.
Second.
Brad making a motion. Sid seconded a motion to, uh, set these. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Gentlemen, I don't recall. I think this may be the first cremation situation that we've had with our two new supervisors. So let me, if I may, Mr. President, I'll give you just a very quick summary. The county adopted, uh, several years ago what is known as an, an unclaimed body, um, cremation policy. And so when our coroner has remains that are subject to his responsibility and he is unable to locate a next of kin or a family member who can claim those remains, uh, or the family is without the means to appropriately dispose of those remains, or the family is unwilling to dispose of those remains, at this board's discretion, you can allow for the cremation of those remains and the placement of those remains in accordance with your policy. Subject to your discretion at the request of the coroner. So these come to you. And when we get them, they come with a notation typically that David has completed that says, here are the efforts that I have made to locate next of kin. Here's what I have been able to find or not find out about next of kin. The, the remains remain in situ. They need to be dealt with. And the only way that I know to get, uh, to get those handled appropriately is through our cremation policy. So when you get them, uh, that information has been, typically has been compiled and delivered to us. At least that's the request that we made to the coroner. So this one is in keeping with your policy. Uh, and it is to have those remains handled by Dean Memorial and to issue payment for that. Uh, the max amount allowed for reimbursement to whatever facility handles that for you is four hundred and fifty? I think it is. See, the four hundred is four hundred and fifty. So that's, it'll be whatever the, the amount is set out in our policy. And I'm pretty sure that's four fifty. Just need a motion to, uh, to authorize or approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right. Mr. Calhoun makes a motion to approve that.
Second.
Jay seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Speaking to you, Mike.
All right. Uh, Mr. President, I've got, uh, one item of additional business I'll get to at the appropriate time after Keith, and I, I'm kind of toying with the idea of a fast executive session.
Good morning.
Morning.
As you can see through Tim's section, and you will see, uh, in my section, we are moving forward with finalizing our ARPA projects. Um, I think we have everything either engaged or about to start. So hopefully sometime next year, we'll be through all these funds or, and projects. Uh, item A is one of our, our projects. It's approval to pay app, pay application number two. The four dice construction amount is two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Authority issue that check.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
And old Bradley Calhoun makes a motion to approve. Who seconded it? Scott seconded it. Any other discussion?
Yeah, they, um, as far as that project, I talked to the engineer on that project. They are, should be paving that road today and should be complete by first and next week. Yeah, the ditch, ditch looks good today.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Um, item B is approval to pay payout number two. Uh, this is to Thornton Construction, and this is on our, uh, Reservoir East project. And the amount of one million, six hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, forty-seven cents. Authority issue that check. This is, this is a very large project.
Yeah, this is a more than twenty-year-old problem. Uh, it is taking some money to do. I was out there yesterday and it's tremendous amount of work that's been done. Hopefully will fix problems that have been existing for years and years. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Um, item C is, as you know, we had an election last week and we have a couple of runoff contests. So we're asking for authority to publish notice to conduct an open test of the Verity Scanner and touch writers and print ballots and demand voting devices. And that's gonna be, as you can see, on November twenty-sixth. This is the test.
Jay makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Everything went good on the voting list. Well, I've heard.
Yes, we, we had a, we had over fourteen thousand absentee ballots that had to be counted, so they just took, took some time.
Do we have our numbers back yet as far as percentage?
I think around seventy-one.
It was around, it was between sixty-five and seventy percent, I believe.
Wow.
With the absentees, well, Tony told me with the absentee ballots, it seemed to be one percent.
That's huge.
Yeah.
That is huge.
Yeah.
Um, item D is authority to publish the premium list for the Rankin County Livestock Shows for twenty twenty-five.
I make that motion to approve.
Second.
Jay seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Going back to a previous item, did you have any big lines over at the Word of Life Church?
I don't know. I mean, it was moving well.
So four years ago, you know, we had lines up in Ying Yang. So, man, we, our, our election commissioners actually did a good job getting a new staff in there.
Oakdale had an accident.
Our new machines have assisted in getting that done too.
My recollection four years ago was that the church had put some restrictions on the area that could be used. And I think that's changed.
Well, Word of Life is only one precinct.
I mean, it wasn't just that one. I mean, we had lines that others precincts too.
It's a big precinct. I think we combined two, two larger precincts.
Well, we, we, we were voting two precincts there and we've moved one of those precincts to another precinct.
Down the road.
I remember though Brandon City Hall was backed up and, uh, church over on, uh, uh, Luckney, you know, they had lines.
Well, the thing about Brandon City Hall is people sitting in the line there at six o'clock before the doors even open.
Last time, four years ago, and I don't think we had any lines this time. And to vote seventy percent, that, that was huge. But anyway, go ahead.
Speaking of elections, uh, item E is discussion of potential action on the requests received from the city of Richland for the use of Rankin County voting machines for their municipal election schedule next year.
Did you say next year?
Next year in twenty twenty-five.
In May?
Uh, yes.
June.
May or June?
It's June, I believe, for the city of Richland.
Oh, they don't have primaries?
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Sid makes a motion. I assume to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott seconds that motion. Any other discussion?
So we need to come up with a economical way for them to do it. We can't charge them twenty thousand dollars to use our equipment.
That number I gave you was all the cities combined.
Oh, okay. All right.
And that's them just paying.
Have we come up with a fee yet?
Two thousand or, or do we know yet? Is it roughly two thousand or do we know yet?
It depends on how many machines they request, how many ballots they're gonna have. Some of the ballots, um, you know, I, I I guess like, Ryan, y'all have one ballot?
Yes, one ballot.
So it's, it's an at-large election?
That's correct.
City of Richland, I believe, is the same. So they'll have one election. It just, their fee is gonna be based on how many machines they request.
I got you.
Because we have to set up each machine.
But you did say they request two. We have to send a ADA machine?
That's correct. Yeah. They're, they're required to have an ADA machine on site.
Right.
So, um, there was some questions. Um, the, the circuit clerk has offered to run the elections. These are your machines. You control who has access to them. It's, uh, gonna be up to you guys to tell me how you want to assist the cities with their election prep.
I think we can work all the details out, but I don't want to get too many cooks in the kitchen. You know, we got a good system going now. I don't want to, uh, interrupt our flow. I know our staff, maybe we can come up some way to pay them additional funds if they have to be involved.
Okay. Uh, this would involve, if it's our staff, we would, um, incur some overtime because a lot of the training required is gonna be after hours.
So I talked to election commissioners yesterday and hopefully they can get together and pull this out. Are they, are they here earlier?
I thought Tony was gonna be here.
She's not?
I didn't see.
No.
Yeah, I agree. We need to, you know, try to help them what, what we can, but as long as everything's flowing and running, we don't need to mess, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the next.
On, on F?
What on? On E, do, did we cover that?
I don't think we voted.
I don't think we voted on it.
So we need to make a motion to approve E and L?
You got it?
We just got it.
Okay. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Item F is the, the same item, uh, but it involves the city of Florence using our election.
I make a motion.
Sid makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Um, item G is we're requesting authority to advertise for bids, uh, for an excavator for the road department. This is a budgeted item.
All right.
I make a motion for it.
Brad makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
As you guys are aware, we've had a vacancy created, uh, in our District Four Election Commissioner. So we're open and I invite the board to discuss the vacancy and any actions you determine are necessary.
On, on the consent agenda, you officially re, uh, acknowledged receipt of the, the notification of the resignation. So that vacancy is established formally.
Um, I was contacted a week ago or so, uh, and was, I guess, informed that our election commissioner was going to resign. I think some health problems. And within short order, I have, uh, a person that I'm ready to appoint in an interim basis. Uh, she has been through the trainings. She's worked the polls, comes very highly recommended. And we need to put them to work right away because we have another election. Uh, I think I sent y'all a resume. Madison Heel is her name. And then the, uh, contact information is on that resume. Do we need to make a motion? Does that need to come in a form of a motion?
Do we need to make a motion to add?
Yes, sir, it needs to be added. Well, you've got a discussion.
Yeah, it's on there.
It's already on the agenda. You do need to formally move to, to establish that appointment. Let me walk you guys through what this means. That this is a, a temporary placement.
This is a, an appointee who is literally filling, not an unexpired term, is actually filling the vacancy until a regular special election can be scheduled and held for that seat. And so there's pieces to the puzzle here that are happening. If the board chooses to appoint this hill to the vacant, to fill the vacancy, uh, then, then she will serve until the, the actual individual who will fill the unexpired term of the resigning election commissioner can be elected and qualified, receive the oath and seated. All of that by virtue of the timing, I'll, I'll, I'll explain that first. Mr. Bain's term is for greater than six months. His, the, his remaining term is for greater than six months. In fact, it's close to, I think it's three years.
Yes, sir.
There's three years left on the term. All right? So that's more than six months. Uh, and the next special election that is scheduled is more than ninety days away. So you guys will appoint an individual to fill Mr. or, or you won't, uh, Mr. Bain's vacancy until the regular special election can be scheduled. The next regular special election is in November of twenty twenty-five. So that, this election won't be held contemporaneously with municipal elections. Uh, it will be a county election for that district and for those polling places that are in that district that the election commission will have to schedule and then conduct. Does that make sense? And then whoever is elected November of twenty-five will receive the oath and take office in January of twenty-six and will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Bain. So that's the steps in the process. Ms. Hill's name has been put, put forward by Mr. Gaines as an appropriate person to, to fill the vacancy until the regular special election can be, can be held and then the individual elected can be qualified.
Yes, sir. This, um.
Does that prevent her from running?
I, I don't think so because of the specialty of it. Uh.
So she won't.
You've got to have the training and that type of stuff. I'd say we open it up to whoever wants to run for it when the time comes. But it's sensitive that we get her, a person that's qualified that has done the job in there because we've got another election in two weeks.
Yes.
But will she be able to work that election if she's?
She should.
Ms. Gaines?
Should, yes.
Okay. I'll do it.
I'm good.
And that's the reason that I'm wanting to try to get this done today. So she'll be on the ground running when we have our next election.
This board has complete authority to fill this vacancy. It's totally on this board.
I, yeah. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we accept Rusty's resignation and that we, uh, temporarily appoint Ms. Hill, Madison Hill, to fill this position as an interim, uh, until we can have a special election and then anyone that wants to run can run.
Second.
All right, Jay seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
For, for good clarification, the, the state law requires, now that you've made the appointment, it requires some other things to happen before she can actually be officially in a position to take action, Steve, with any authority or with, she might be sworn. She's, she's gotta go through, number one, we gotta notify the, uh, the Secretary of State's office that the board has filled the vacancy with this individual. The governor actually has to commission her. And so there'll be a process for paperwork. And then she can, and, and my hope would be we, we're able to move very fast through that process and get that done quickly. But there may be a few days before she's in a position. My hope would be she can go ahead and get started with some preliminary stuff and just not taking any official action as a commissioner until we get the commission from the governor.
So she can't actually start getting paid until that's happened?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I don't know that. We'll, we'll try to communicate clearly what the next steps in the process are. But I thought I would mention that in the event that there's, the assumption that she can just go ahead and start working. And I, I.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
She, she can't fill out a petition until, until we got the commission.
It'd be some trying.
By the way, she has to be bonded. And, and so there's some, there's some things that have to happen.
Checks.
Uh, yeah. So, so we'll get busy trying to put all that together. The clerk's office is involved in that process. Governor's office is involved in the process. So there's some steps there we have to deal with. Uh, you also are required to notify the election commission that they are required to schedule a regular special election for a position that is not normally going, going to be on the ballot for twenty-five. So we'll, we'll take care of all of that for you. Just making sure you know there's a lot of, whenever we get a vacancy like this, the, the, there's lots of dominoes that fall on that.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I do have one item of additional business. Um, this is last minute stuff that came to our attention. I'm requesting to add authority to issue a check to Hemp Hill Construction for PO number two, four, one, three, two, six. This is, uh, replacement of the bridge at Midway Road. This is our ERVR fund. The job's been completed and we'd like to go ahead and clear that out.
You got another one to add?
Just that one.
Motion to add.
Sid makes a motion to, to add, you say, two, four, one, two, four, six?
Uh, three, two, six, two, four, one, three, two, six, PO number. And it's in the amount, I can give you that as well. Well, I don't want to give you an amount because I don't know if this is the exact amount.
But it's to Hemp Hill and it's on the Midway Bridge. Like Jay made some motion to add. Sid seconded some motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion passes to add. Now then, have a motion to approve. We have a motion.
Motion approved.
Jay makes a motion to approve. Sid seconded that motion. All in favor? Motion passes.
Mr. President, if I may, one item of additional business. We, Rankin County is, um, is pleased to have received some funding from the state legislature, uh, during the session in, uh, twenty-four. Uh, those funds are as a result of Senate Bill two, four, six, eight. Uh, this was an appropriation to Rankin County for road maintenance. Uh, and it has been, uh, received, the funds have been received by the county now, uh, and are on deposit. This was, uh, DFA was the funding mechanism that the legislature chose for that purpose. Uh, we, we, uh, we, the, the administrative side of the House kid, will appreciate some direction on the utilization of the funds for road maintenance. Uh, one idea is to implement the road plan that the board adopted on November the fourth. You adopted with the, the Civil Link, uh, road plan that the road manager presented to you. And so for purposes of clarity and, uh, drawing a bead on what we need to do and how we need to utilize those funds, uh, an idea is being floated to go ahead and implement the road plan as discussed and as approved.
Well, I, I need to make one caveat. I have to spend some money that's not on the road plan. I got, uh, the road around the soccer fields has been damaged and it was already in bad shape, but we need to overlay that.
If, if I may, Jay, we, that, that matter is already handled and, uh, and will be handled as a part of the ARPA project, which caused the damage.
Okay.
If, if that is satisfactory to you.
As long as the contractor is willing to do it.
Okay. My understanding is the contractor said, y'all let me know, uh, what, what the damage is and how you want it fixed and we'll get it fixed. And so we're handling that through.
I mean, we had, we paved that like a year or two ago, didn't we? Or did something?
We chipped silver four years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's been a while. Brad, that, and Jay knows this too, that, that, that road is, is substandard. It, it's always been substandard. It can't handle the traffic load that's being asked of it for this project, for sure.
But it can handle the load with the soccer.
I think it can handle soccer mom traffic, yes, sir. I think, I think we can handle that. Uh, but it, it, it can't handle what we asked it to handle for this ARPA project. The, the, the ARPA project caused the damage. And so, uh, so our idea, Jay, is let's let the ARPA project pay for that cost. So these funds, uh.
I just kinda hate it a little bit. I do wanna make note, though, that project actually is coming in under budget, like fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, but now it's just being blown way over.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, so in, in keeping with what we were discussing, Jay, the, the idea would, understanding that soccer road, soccer field road is gonna be handled through the ARPA programming.
All right.
Uh, the, the idea would be to take, take the appropriation that we got under Senate Bill two, four, six, eight and apply that to implementation of your road plan that you adopted on the fourth.
All right.
Can we get good clarification? That's what we're gonna do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's make a motion to add it. All right. Brad makes a motion to add this to the agenda. Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, it's added. Now then, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Brad makes a motion to approve. Scott seconded some motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion passes.
Gentlemen, can I have y'all for ten minutes? Uh, and this would be, this be litigation matters, for litigation matters?
All right, do I have a motion to discuss the need? To an executive?
Uh, mo.
Jay makes a motion to discuss the need for executive, uh, litigation and Sid, did you?
I second it for ten minutes.
Sid seconded that motion.
For ten minutes.
All right, ten minutes. Now then, do I have a motion to go into executive to discuss, uh, litigation? Jay makes that motion.
Second.
Scott seconded the motion. All in favor? Uh, motion passes when executive.